Like the calls of Dr. PBD Planning Board Meeting. Agenda for Thursday, November 6, 2025, held at 7:00 PM, PBD City Hall, Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. First item on the agenda is the approval of the amendments of the 1016, 2025 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting for the 1025 meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Dr. Otto's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is 1-3 Ian Circle, PBD, Mass. Map 75 parcel 174 and 174A applicant Attorney John Kelty, 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. This property is located in our two zoning district. Applicant is proposing to move lot lines of original Lot 3, plus or minus 7,698 square feet, and original Lot 4 of 11,762 feet. Corresponding documents for this agenda item, please call Andrew Levine at PBD City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I have offices, I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Mass., and I'm representing two entities, both of which are owned and managed by a client of mine, Michael O'Hara. The first unit, the first deed is to MBOH LLC, and the second piece of property is owned by, I gave you that deed too, and that's CMOH LLC. This is simply a matter of the owner of the two properties wants to move the lot line that exists between, between the properties. We've put the former property line in dotted lines so that you can see what the lot was shaped like and looked like before. And now if you endorse the, this approval not required plan, the line would be where you see it as a solid, solid line. The, both lots will have sufficient area and frontage in their zoning district such that they will not become any more non-conforming. I don't know the exact purpose of this zone change, but judging from a little bit of past history, it would seem to me that we're trying to make what shows as Lot 4A as big as possible, and there's now some open space to the right, and it would not shock me if there was a proposal. But that would require a variance and would not be before this board until such time as a variance was granted. But that's speculation on my part, and I'm happy to answer. Any other questions the board may have?
Any questions from the board? Dr. Otto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do both the lots to be created have frontage that complies with current zoning?
They have the required frontage in the zoning district, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
Through, through the chairman to the applicant. You may not know what's going in there, but I know what's going in there. Maybe you can explain why they would need to go to ZBA. Is it for square footage? It's certainly not for frontage. Can you explain, you said if they tried to put another duplex in there, they would need to go to zoning for relief. Can you explain what the reason for the relief would be if they were to get, to try to put another house in there? Is it not lacking square footage? It's not lacking frontage?
Is required for the duplex.
Right, so it's not?
I have 11,922. If I try to take any away, I'm not, I don't have 15,000 combined.
Right, right. So it's not, it's not frontage, it's square footage is the problem?
Oh, I would say yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Jack, it's not shown on this plan, but I'm looking at our GIS here on the city, and it does show a utility easement that's located in this area, right about where the original lot line kind of jogs in. Is this going to affect that at all?
I'm not able to see what you're referring to. Oh, a utility easement, is that for the electric?
There's electric easement that goes up Ian Circle, and then there's?
That's on the original Ian Circle plan?
Yeah, it's, well, it's not shown on this one.
Correct, but it would remain, it would, it would remain on the record at the registry of deeds, yes.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, I'll accept the motion.
Just briefly, Jack, back to the easement, is the, is it currently the easement split 50/50 with these two properties?
Does the easement service those?
Is it half the easement on one lot and half on the other?
On the, on the plan in which I think that the definitive subdivision, it shows to be entirely on with this iteration, it'll be all on Lot 4A. Yep, because it's to the right, see the dotted line. Currently, it's to the right of the dotted line.
One more question, sorry. Through the, through the chair. Now that you bring up the easements, they're not drawn on there. I know that those two homes are underground fed, so the easement will have to be redrawn to accommodate, because now it's not, now, now the underground electric is going through the other person's lot, and that will be?
Over, yeah, won't be on the boundary, correct.
It's not, it's not overhead fed, it's underground.
Correct.
Yes, so that, that will need to be addressed with a permanent easement.
To your point, Roy, there looks like there's a, you'll correct me if I'm wrong here.
It's not on this drawing.
No, no, I'm, I'm looking at a satellite image of this property, and it looks like right through the existing lot line, the dotted.
Exactly.
There's like a box or a juncture, something that's located right there.
And typically what that entails is a 5 by 10 easement on the left lot and a 5 by 10 easement on the right lot, forming a 10 by 10. So now that's going to be 100% in the other one, so you're going to need, you're going to have underground conductors going to a different home, going through the other guy's And, and I would think that that should have shown up on this drawing here, and it's not there.
I think you answered this, Jack, but your client owns both these lots?
Yes, he does.
Different entity, but yes.
Okay, because they're, they're multifamilies, both of them are duplexes, so will this lot line, it looks like number three parking is for this side of duplex, is on this side, and it looks like this now lot line, there's a split backyard for both, but your client owns both. But I, I'd be curious with how this works underneath common ownership if it's different entities.
Oh, and there's a lot of work to be done. If this, if the plan were ever to be utilized and recorded, there's a lot of work to be done, because there's mortgages on both properties. Mortgages would have to be altered, re-described, partial releases granted perhaps, so. And I would agree too, that if we were to record this plan, we could, we would have to modify all our easements with the PMLP.
Yes, but.
At the present time, there's no intention to use the plan, but certainly the questions are all.
Right, but, but then if you leave here tonight with a signed plan, then you can go record it, and it's incorrect.
What?
If, if you leave here tonight with a signed plan.
Yeah.
Then you could just, at will, go and record it.
We could.
You could, and it would be wrong. It was not, it's not.
It would not serve any good purpose, you're correct.
Right, and also, to Drew's question, just because the same guy owns both properties today, doesn't mean that he can't sell one tomorrow.
True.
Right, so I would recommend that this drawing get edited, shown the easements correctly, and show an easement encasing the underground electric and various other things likely to the house on the left that are going through the proposed property on the right.
I'm, I'm going to have to agree with Roy here. I don't have a problem with the plan, but I would like an accurate plan with the easements on it, and then we can just move it along.
Yeah, I would respectfully request the matter be continued so that I can provide additional information on the plan. Michelle was right. Michelle was right.
Move to grant the petitioner's motion to extend time to edit the plan.
Next item on the agenda is 103 Foster Street, map 95, Lot 001A. This is an application by William and Robert De Niro, asking for a site plan review to demolish and redevelop the existing building structures. Renewal will be include construction of a single building comprising of multiple storage base, contract storage. The site is a former industrial property, is composed of one parcel totaling approximately 1.84 acres and contains three buildings formerly used for industrial purposes. Jack, this shows?
It is Attorney Kelty's, this 103 Foster Street, but just before Attorney Kelty comes, I would just like to mention, this is an application that was filed with the Conservation Commission a little bit ago. We had a construction review with these, with these applicants, I would say about a month and a half ago, two months ago at this point. This project is currently in Concom, and I'm sure Jack is going to explain all this, but I've reached out to Ty &amp; Bond, who's the engineer who's doing these plans, and Jean Christie from Ty &amp; Bond has a presentation that I'm going to enter her into the meeting now as well, but just give the board a heads up on that, but.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. All right, I think, Jack, I can start presenting, and then we can loop you in as needed. Does that sound good?
Yeah, Jean, is there any way that you could either get closer to the mic, or it's just coming a little bit muffled on our end?
Is this better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm speaking right into the microphone, so. All right, thank you, everyone. My name is Jean Christie, I'm Principal Engineer with Ty &amp; Bond. Thank you to the board for accommodating me via Zoom this evening. I'm here tonight to present the redevelopment of 103 Foster Street on behalf of the applicant Andrea Brothers General Contractors and Robert Andrea. We can go to the next slide, Drew. So 103 Foster Street, obviously located on Foster Street, immediately adjacent to Goldway Brook. You can see the parcel outlined here in yellow. With that proximity to Goldway Brook, our entire site is within jurisdiction of the PBD Conservation Commission, and as you mentioned, we are currently under review by the Concom, and is speaking with Lucia earlier today. We're getting really close to issuing our order of conditions. The project is currently in peer review. We did receive our first round of comments about a couple weeks ago, and the drawings and the package that the board has in front of them tonight includes changes that were made in response to that initial peer review. So the timing worked out great, and we were able to get some of those comments in to the plans that you see today. Currently, the site has two-story brick building, a one-story brick building, another brick garage, and then a couple other outbuildings. Most of the property right now is paved or gravel, kind of broken pavement. We're proposing to demolish all of that existing buildings and pavement and replace it with, with new construction. One of the most important pieces about this property is that it is located within a mass DEP activity and use limitation area. There is some historic contamination on site. The AUL is requiring that the site be properly capped and managed to prevent, you know, exposure to the environment, to any of those potential contaminants. You can see from this plan, or the ortho in front of you, that we are in an industrial area. The railroad tracks to the northwest of our site is kind of our buffer between us and any residential uses, so this property does not immediately abut any residential use. You can go to the next slide. So existing conditions, we zoom in a little bit more on this plan. There's not a whole lot to talk about, but I just want to define what the boundaries are. The orange line is our property boundary. There is some easements on our property, activity, or access easements, I should say, along the, the north side of the building, so top of the building on this plan, that we do propose to retain through proposed construction. You can see Goldway Brook along the bottom of our property line, and that blue line is simply the, the floodway area. We needed to include that for our Conservation Commission. I know the planning board may not have as much interest in it, but we had to keep them all in the same drawing, so I hope the line work doesn't get confusing. You can go to the next slide. So our proposal is to demolish the existing buildings, pretty much the entire site, and replace with a single building, single story, located within all of our building setbacks. Those building setbacks are shown on this plan in red lines. We do only have that one access from Foster Street, so we are proposing to improve that access. You can see on this plan that, you know, while, while we're paving the entire width of the property at the front there, we are using pavement, striping, and demarcation to better define the in and out of, of the, of the, of the property. We are also proposing to improve that driveway, apron, sidewalk along Foster Street and that far right-hand side of this plan. So the proposed use is contractor-based storage, so this is, you know, single units, you know, secure units that a contractor would rent out to support, to store some of their equipment and dry goods. You know, each is responsible for their own, you know, equipment inside there, taking care of the trash that they generate from their usage and disposing of it. But we do include a dumpster in the far back-left corner behind the building for those events that we do have sites, you know, any debris on the site that we do need to clean up for ourselves. We are proposing eight parking spaces along that far-left side. We don't expect them to be used just because of the general nature of what this, you know, development is, but they are there because we needed to provide something. Relative to the AUL on site, we are proposing to pave the entire property. While there is an area in the back, on that left-hand side, that is currently not paved, to fully comply with the AUL, we've decided to, you know, put a, put that pervious cap on the entire property to avoid future exposure to, to the environment from contaminants on site. If you go to the next slide, it's, there's a lot of lines on here, I don't expect everyone to see it, but I just want to explain what our stormwater management system is on site. Because of those, you know, potential contaminants on site, we aren't proposing groundwater recharge. We don't want to put water back into the ground here, but we are proposing to improve the quality of stormwater leaving the site. So what we've done is come up with a grading scheme, you know, topography here, that, that keeps all the water that's hap, falling onto the site, into the site, collected, treated, and then disposed of, either, you know, the cleaner water back to Goldway Brook or into the city's collection system in Foster Street. You can also see, you know, it's very, it's, it's a little busy, busy of a plan, but we are also proposing new water services, sanitary service, and then, you know, electric telephone kind of services as well. In this plan, you can see some of the easement lines in the back that are proposed, or that are being maintained under this redevelopment to provide access to those properties immediately to the north as they do have today. Next one, next slide, please. So just some quickly, other information about the parcel, you know, we do know we're here tonight for a site plan review. We're in that general business zoning district, and like I said, it's a storage warehouse use to, you know, comply with what the, the city has for uses defined. The project is within that flood conondery district, but not in the wetlands conservancy district. As I mentioned, we don't abut immediately any residential districts. We are requesting one waiver from your landscape requirements, and this is really relative to that AUL, that it's, it's tough to put plants in the ground and keep them watered and hydrated while we're trying to not disturb that soil and not put water into the ground. Part of our, our off-site mitigation with the Conservation Commission is to provide some of those riverfront area mitigation plantings as part of the George Peabody Legacy Park Project at 16 Lowell Street. So that's currently being worked on with, with the commission. We've issued to them a planting plan for that area to kind of satisfy the onsite impacts that we are having to the riverfront area. If you want to go to the next slide, this one is simply, you know, when we have a question about some of our compliance with some of the dimensional criteria, I'd love to refer back to this as needed. But I think that's probably it for my initial presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. Through you to the applicant, through the chair. Just a few questions. Almost all the way to the left of your plan, I guess I'm on C103, but it shows in all of them, there's, looks like some easement lines that kind of run in a northeast, southwest direction, and the description of that is illegible. What is that?
I believe that's the railroad, I don't remember what exactly they were called. Jack, do you remember what they were called?
No, that's not, no, it's going right through your building, it's not a railroad.
No, not the railroad, it's a railroad siding.
Oh, that was a spur?
It was.
Oh, okay, good answer, thank you. How many units are planned? Do you, we usually get architecturals that show elevations and such, and maybe it's too early for that, but do you have the, how many units are?
I think there's 17 or 18 units total.
Okay, because there's another plan that's been going around that I've seen, that all the long, thin ones are split down the middle, and they have doors from both sides, so just kind of curious about that. Maybe you could get, get back to us.
No, I think it's probably 17, right? Go ahead.
Just to your point, Mr., Roy, that plan that you're speaking of was the plan that was submitted before they filed their site plan review application. They filed a plan for the construction review meeting, and at that meeting, that was brought up, that it looks like there was 50 some odd units, exactly the plan you're talking about. At that meeting, it was described that that was not the right plan, that this was the plan that they were going with instead, that they had switched it.
So if, if that's the case, which, which side are the doors that the vehicles can get in and out from? Are they riverside or opposite riverside?
I know for a fact that they're riverside.
Okay.
I don't offhand know if we were considering doors on the opposite side as well, so that if you need to drive through to load up, you know, just load up equipment, you could do that.
Okay. Building height?
I think we're current, we're one story, so I know we're below that three stories. I don't think we have the architectural drawings finalized quite yet to get that total height.
Okay, and I see in the top-left corner, there's a frac tank. Is that a permanent feature?
No, no, that, that was included at the request of the Conservation Commission in the event that we did need to deal with some challenging groundwater during construction. It would not be there permanently.
So I'm, I'm involved with the local electric utility, and there's been talk between our people and, and the property owner about a pole line running through the area. Will Ty &amp; Bond work with PMLP during the pole installation to make sure that any not-so-nice soils that get dug up get managed properly?
Yes, yes.
Perfect, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Otto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Typically with architectural plans, we get plans, but also elevations with indication of building materials, so that should be part of things to come forward, I would request. And then second, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just acknowledging, I said, okay, thank you.
And then, does the canal for the brook actually, is it actually on your property or the adjacent property or split?
I think it's a little bit of all. There are areas where it's on our property and then off our property, and part of one of the building foundations is integral to that wall.
You've probably noticed that on the adjacent property is a, it's too generous to call it a park, but a little area alongside, a recreational area, let's just call it, alongside the brook. And the city's original plan, and Drew is going to correct me if I'm incorrect on this, was to be able to build a trail that led in the direction of the George Peabody House at 205 Washington Street.
We haven't, I, I was not here when that plan, I guess I'm actually unsure of what plan you're speaking of.
So my, I think my bigger point is we should, I think, investigate the status of that and what, what is desirable going forward. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through you. My concern is the entrance itself on Foster Street, and I think of tractor trailers possibly, and certainly a fire ladder truck going in there. I mean, you know, you got, they're 12 feet wide, sure, there's 24 feet if there's no car coming the other way, but the swing, whether you're going right or left, it just seems like it's not wide enough at the entryway where you got these concrete pads on both sides. And I'm just wondering, and I know there's a utility pole right smack in the, you know, on the edge of the concrete pad, that may or may not have to be moved, but I, I think that that should be wider to accommodate a possible tractor trailer, or certainly the fire department might have an issue with their ladder truck making the swing in there, especially if this happens to be a vehicle or something. swing in there, especially if this happens to be a vehicle or something, uh, parked in the way. I, I don't know what the parking layout is here. It doesn't show it here yet, but, um, you know, that's something of concern and maybe something you want to look at to see if you can make that wider than, uh, the 24 feet there. Um, thank you.
Any other questions before the board?
I'll give it a shot. Uh, good evening. Could you touch briefly on your contaminants issues? Are they at the surface or the deep down? What are the contaminants?
Ooh, I am not the LSP, so I don't have all of this in the top of my brain. Um, but tie-in bond did do, um, a phase one, you know, earlier this summer where we looked at what the record information is, um, about what those contaminants are. So I don't, I don't have it in top of my head, I'm sorry. Um, but we can get a summary to the board.
Yeah, has there been any recent coring, uh, core samples taken on that site?
No recent samples, I'm aware of.
All right. Uh, you mentioned capping. I'm, I'm assuming that's going to be asphalt capping?
Correct.
And are you going to raise the elevation at all, or it's going to remain the same?
It's, it's staying exactly the same, um, because of our, we're in the floodplain, and we don't want to impact our flood storage.
No, I've seen places in the past where they, uh, not particularly here in Peabody, but elsewhere that they'll put down a clay cap to, uh, really seal things up good. That was, that was my question. All right, stormwater, you mentioned stormwater is going to be treated on-site, and then where's it going to go from there?
Uh, stormwater is, is treated on-site through, you know, regular deep sub-hooded catch basins, as well as structural water quality units. Um, and then there are multiple discharges either going straight to Goldway Brook or out on, to Foster Street to, uh, one of the culverts out there today.
Very good, thank you. And your railroad right-of-way, is that all in private ownership, and has that right-of-way been decommissioned?
I do not believe it has been decommissioned, but I might be speaking out of turn here. I hope others will be able to help smooth that question.
I'm, I'm asking questions. Uh, if we can get some answers, that would be excellent. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes?
Question through the chair. Uh, Jack, could you describe the use a little bit? Um, what is, what does it mean to be warehouse and wholesaling activities?
Uh, the intended use is contractors' bays. Um, so we'll have, uh, small contractor businesses that, uh, will be able to have a single vehicle. Our number of units now really only accommodate single truck. Um, perhaps if they were two smaller trucks, but, uh, all our, our proposal, we are not requesting any kind of special permit for outdoor storage. All storage would be indoors, there'd be no materials, uh, and even no office space. I had originally thought these would be, uh, mezzanine-style, park the, uh, truck and then have a little office space. Um, no intention to create any office space above either. Strictly intended to be no completion, no assemblage in and out.
Okay. Um, the warehousing activities imply someone could be manning, working at?
Um, you're, you're, it, it said warehousing on the plan, is that?
It's, it's in the, in the, uh, packet, it says storage, warehouse, and wholesaling activities. I hear activities, I hear 18 or 19 bays. I'm wondering how you only have eight parking spots?
Yeah, we, there's.
I can help with that one. Um, that, that listing came directly from the proposed, the uses, um, in the zoning code. Um, it was the bit, it was the one that best fit. That's why we used that one. Not necessarily including warehouse, though.
Yeah, I guess I just don't understand how 18 or 19 bays can have eight parking spots. I don't, I mean, if they're operating as businesses, wouldn't it stand a, a parking spot per unit at least?
I don't think the intent was that, um, everybody coming into the, you know, to use their bay was going to be dropping a car off there, that they may be coming in with their truck, loading up equipment such as lawn mowing equipment or other things, and then leaving. So they would not necessarily need a parking spot.
The other issue I would raise is that there has been one, um, go-round with the, uh, peer reviewers, Weston and Sampson, who were doing the peer review for the CONCOM. Uh, one of their very last comments, uh, was about our entrance, uh, and then there are additional comments that we have to respond to, and I think that, um, for us to revisit the, uh, entryway as was suggested here tonight, and also, uh, is reflected, uh, in the last paragraph of, uh, the peer review, um, we're having, we're working with, uh, tie-in bond to, uh, respond to that peer review, so you may well see some changes, uh, before this matters, uh, before you for approval. Uh, you may well see some changes to the, um, uh, entryway.
Any other questions?
I, I just wanted to make a comment. Uh, I know the area very well. Uh, it's dilapidated, it's, it's a terrible, terrible-looking facility, and anything they could possibly could put there is a plus to the city and to the neighbors.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I can. Uh, I just have a couple of questions here. I, so Attorney Kelty is referring to, as Gene had mentioned, this application is in front of the Conservation Commission, knowing full well this would be coming in front of the planning board. Jack did have the peer reviewers look at the front, uh, or Will Politz did have the peer reviewers look at the front entrance. Uh, we haven't received anything from Will to the planning board yet, um, per se, with this new submittal, so we haven't gotten any sign-off yet. Um, that being said, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, first, I want to make some points to, excuse me, to Dr. Otto's point. If you do not have architecturals that can be provided, you guys will have to seek a waiver that the board would have to agree upon for architectural plans, and then you did not submit a waiver either for a photometric plan, which leads me to my second point, where it's, you did mention this does not abut residential, this directly abuts residential, right on the other side of the canal is a, uh, multi-family apartment building or condos that will be directly overlooking this site. So I think from my recommendation, a photometric plan might actually probably be pretty helpful for the board, just to see, and if not, to talk to the applicant about their lighting on the site. Gina, I, I think I was looking at the plan, I missed it when you said, the doors, if I remember correctly, they're opening towards the river?
Correct.
Correct? Sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that furthermore, on the plan that was submitted, you have, uh, in talks about the river, you know, existing foundation walls remain, and then it says proposed fence. Is that because it's a, might be a fence there along the canal, or there's definitely going to be a fence along the canal?
There will be a fence along the canal. Um, you know, having the, the paved area go right up to the wall without any form of, um, security or crash protection isn't, you know, what we want to do. We do need to have something there. Um, since there's a fence there in some portions, we thought we would just replace the fence there.
Reiterating what Mr. Gagnon said, and then to what Attorney Kelty said, looking at, uh, this front, I, just in case if people aren't familiar with this site currently, I can share the plan because this will get really confusing when I start talking about this, if no one sees what I'm talking about. Um, I'm going to share the actual site plan here, so we can discuss this front entrance. Currently, as it exists today, the topography, if everyone can see my mouse, the, the site slo, uh, slopes this way towards the river, and there is, uh, concrete barriers, I would say, that go along the easement line. Did you mention, if I'm correct, uh, that you're getting rid of those concrete barriers along the easement?
That's correct.
Okay. So will there be anything to differentiate between traffic within this site and traffic going to the properties in the rear via the easement?
Nothing to direct or prevent folks using it. Um, you know, that, that access easement is still wide-open pavement there. Um, there might be something we can do in terms of striping to kind of demarcate either property line or easement areas or whatever.
I, the, the point of this being is that currently this site sits unused, it hasn't, I don't think it's been used in a little bit, but now we're putting in contractor bays, which are going to have trucks, that's been established here. Uh, the properties in the rear obviously have trucks. I think some sort of safety differentiation between vehicles traveling to the rear and vehicles traveling within the site, um, will be needed. Furthermore, I hear what you're saying about landscaping, but I will always ask and highly recommend, strongly recommend that landscaping be provided. Um, I understand you have an AUL on the site, but I think if you could add landscaping or some sort of hard landscaping, hard infrastructure in that front entrance area, um, I think will go a long way. And then there's not only, there's the existing, as it's shown here, uh, concrete pad, but I think, Roy, you could probably better answer this with PMLP. It seems like that light pole up front has quite a bit of stuff on it for this site.
Uh, that whole area will, will, will be completely reworked, electrically speaking. And as far as the plantings go, I, I don't think we can dictate something that's, that they can't do. You, they, they can't let any water get into the substrate. Why, if they're going to do some plantings, do them elsewhere. Do them, do them where they're going to do the stormwater compensation over by Brody's. They can't, they can't, they can't penetrate the seal. So putting plantings in penetrates the seal, water will infiltrate. Do you want them to put pots? You want concrete pots?
I, I, any sort of hard infrastructure, I would like to see our downtown look very nice, and I'd like to see landscaping in our downtown, especially in this area. Along a river, that there is already, as Dr. Otto had mentioned, a public park, and as we've also established, there's a residential units, not only next door directly, and then next to that, there's even more residential units as well, and across the street, down the road a little bit. So, yes, I will always strongly recommend that there be landscaping added and.
But we can't, we can't dictate something that violates DEP rules. And I would, I would say that we should let the Conservation Commission deal with that.
Let me, I don't think, though, that the suggestion that where we can add it, and we should work at it. Um, also, the other portion of that, uh, spoke to the issue of working harder at that entryway to make it work for, uh, both, uh, for both, uh, people who utilize it, and the possibility may exist to use something in the way of landscaping out there. But we also, uh, have been before the Historic Commission, and, um, the interest, uh, in this building, uh, from the historic perspective, is that this was, uh, the, uh, at one time, this was the largest, this building, which was, uh, a maritime company, uh, which made cleats. They specialized in cleats, which are the, and I, uh, hope to, I made a very, uh, what should we call it? Creative, uh, expression of that perhaps if we did our landscaping down at the Legacy Park, maybe there's even a further connection between George Peabody, who did make his fortune, uh, with Maritime Voyages overseas. Maybe there is some connection that the cleats, the very cleats made to tie up those ships that, uh, later made a fortune for George Peabody, uh, were made right here. The building itself doesn't lend itself, uh, as very historic, very attractive. We've agreed, though, uh, we, we did note that, uh, there's granite, granite sills all through the building. Uh, the brick, um, is, uh, to an extent reusable. Our, uh, people that are going to salvage, are going to salvage timbers. Uh, there's an elevator in there that has, lo and behold, leather strapping, uh, to pull the elevator up and down. Uh, we had a meeting on-site with the Historic Commission, and then a second with the, um, Historic, what's the other? Debbie Eskenazi. But they have an interest maybe in, uh, certainly, uh, they had an interest in seeing the elevator. They want all of our records, which we're happy to turn over to them. Uh, there's a record of sales. At one time, I think this particular building employed 70 people, and, uh, that was the biggest employer in the city of Peabody in 18-something. We're going to utilize, uh, the granite, and we've talked to the Historic Commission about a plaque commemorating what the building does, doing that in a bronze probably, and utilizing perhaps the brick and granite in combination to make a very large planter at the front of the building with this plaque in it. So we're going to work to, um, please the Historic Commission and, at the same time, uh, commemorate the, uh, the usefulness and the, and the history of the site. Uh, and in so doing, uh, we are thinking in terms of at least one planter, but perhaps that granite, uh, is usable to create other planting areas that would be on the surface. Uh, we can't displace too much more water, uh, than we're already doing, but those are all issues we'd be happy to look at.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, last one is, Jack, are you going to require any variances for this property?
No.
Especially if you're not providing landscaping in this way, and that, I guess you'd have to speak with the building department, because the BC allows residential, and the zoning bylaw does state that the general.
We're not residential.
What?
We're not residential.
No, I know, but you abut residential.
Yes.
A property that allows residential, and then under the landscaping section 10, it does state that under general require, regulations applicable in all zoning districts, that riverside or rear yards, a butt land zone for residential use, a landscape buffer shall be required. Um, a landscape buffer shall be a vegetative state of at least three feet in depth and six feet in height and insulation, contain a mix of evergreen deciduous trees, shrubs that buffer, shall be set impervious even during winter. A fence may be used in addition to landscaping. So I would just work with, talk to the building department about that especially.
Anything else? Again, then, thank you for the presentation.
I would just say, Attorney Kelty, I don't know if the board is willing to vote on this tonight, I don't know what the recommendation is, but you might wish to seek a, ask, request for continuance, but I did want to state that I have been speaking to Mr. Politz, and as Ms. Christie did mention, I know that they are working towards getting probably a memo to the board, uh, in the near recent future, probably.
So I would ask that the matter be continued to your next meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the petitioner's request to, for an extension of time until the second meeting of November.
I'll second that.
Next item on the agenda is appointment, Attorney John Kelty, uh, representative to application for ZBA 13 West Dane Road.
John Kelty, 40 Lowell, Peabody, Mass. Uh, this matter of, uh, wanting to, uh, send a repetitive, uh, condit, uh, petition to the Board of Appeals. Uh, the first presentation, uh, I utilized, uh, the, the actual application for the variance was wrong, that was our doing. Uh, I interpreted the plan I was given incorrectly. Uh, there is, uh, a deck on the back that required a left-side yard variance. Uh, we asked for relief on the right side of two feet. The bump out on the house that exists today is two feet from the side, side yard. Uh, all that's happening there is there's a deck being placed, there's, but the plan said new addition. Um, it's the stairway down requires front yard relief and, uh, will continue to use the same two-foot side yard. Um, so I believe that, uh, the petition that was denied, uh, was properly denied because it was confusing. The board was unable to, uh, discern, uh, what was really being asked for. Uh, and so I've, uh, filed a new, uh, petition, and, uh, the proper advertisement will, in the, uh, new plan, which shows things properly, and I would respectfully. will, in the new plan, which shows things properly. And I would respectfully request that we be authorized to go back to the Board of Appeals.
Any questions from the board?
With the new petition, which would be newly advertised, et cetera.
Attorney Kelty, has this property ever had variances granted before?
The Eastern Land Survey tells me it did. I did not, for that two-foot side yard. I did not ask for the building file. Before I am back at the ZBA, I will ask for the building permit file, so that I can see if a variance was granted.
Secondly, this is R1 zoning, correct?
Yes, or R1A?
Is it R1A or R1? Well, my point was going to be, in the old days, when these houses were developed and constructed, was the dimensional requirements different than what they are now?
Yes, in this particular, yes. This was one of the older and existing before the subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, this was a house built by Ace Karamas.
Any other questions, Dr. Otto?
Just so I'm clear, Jack. The thing that was shown as a proposed addition in the September 3rd plan is actually proposed deck and stairs. Is that the only change that is being requested?
Did I give you the new plan?
Yes, you did.
Did I give you two plans? Where we showed proposed addition, and I'm also going to give the board the architecturals, I filed the architecturals. So, where it said proposed addition earlier, it's going to say, it now says proposed stairs.
And that's the only change?
And it's called out on the left side, that proposed deck in the back. We've highlighted that to a greater degree, and then the, that was never even requested in the first variance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, in the matter before us, regarding 13 West Diane Lane, I would move to allow the petitioner to refile with the ZBA for a second bite at the apple. So, moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda, subdivision board action, none. Correspondence, regional notices? Questions? City Council, none. And other matters probably before the board. 2026 meeting dates and agenda deadlines for the planning board have been issued.
Do we need a motion to receive and agree on these dates?
Yes.
Move to, move that the board accepts the dates proposed for our 2026 schedule.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, unanimous. Thank you. Other-
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
We have a second? Second. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.